Good evening, I'd like to welcome everybody to the regular scheduled Hibbing City Council meeting for Wednesday, September 6th, 2023. Let the record show, all councilors are present. Ads and deletes, add consent agenda number 22, number 23, and number 24. Add department and committee reports, number 1F and number 4A. Add bids and quotes, number 3C. Approval of the agenda, wishes of the council?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by councillor Fasso.
Support.
Support by councillor Bayless. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed name, motion carries. We're gonna bypass Career Academy certificates because we don't have your, all your names yet, and so as soon as we get those, we'll fit you into the agenda. Approve the minutes, approve the minutes, Hibbing City Council meeting of August 16th, 23. Wishes of the council?
One approve.
Motion to approve by councillor Whitney.
Support.
Support by councillor Hildebrand. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay, motion carries. Prove the minutes, Hibbing City Council workshop meeting of August 16th, 2023. Wishes of the council?
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to approve.
Motion to approve by councillor Hoffman-Sockman.
Support.
Support by councillor Schweberger. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay, motion carries. Prove the minutes of the special Hibbing City Council meeting, August 30th, 2023. Wishes of the council?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by councillor Bus.
Support.
Support by councillor Fasso. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay, motion carries. Prove minutes, budget workshop meeting of August 30th, 23. Wishes of the council?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by councillor Schweberger.
Support.
Support by councillor Hoffman-Sockman. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay, motion carries. Move on to the consent agenda. Approve accounts payable dated 8/31/2023, checks number 17512 through 17555, in the amount of $309,105.11. Two, approve city council payroll for pay-peri ending 8/11/2023, checks number 168790 through 168800, in the amount of $550,925.2. 8/25/2023, checks number 168801 through 168806, in the amount of $566,833.59. Number three, authorize Hibbing City Council to attend the Senate bonding tour of the Public Utilities Water Treatment Plant on Thursday, September 7th, 2023, at 1:50 p.m. at the wastewater treatment plant. Number four, at the water treatment plant. Number four, authorize the Hibbing City Council to attend the House bonding tour for the Big Utilities Water Treatment Plant on Thursday, September 28th, 2023, at 9:30 a.m. Five, authorize the Hibbing City Council to attend the City of Hibbing HPU Golf Tournament on Thursday, December 14th, 2023, at the Hibbing Municipal Golf Course. Number six, authorize the City, uh, City of Hibbing's fall yard waste cleanup for October 23rd through November 3rd, 2023. Number seven, approve the updated agreement between the City and St. Louis County for the services agreement for non-exanarctile services, effective July 1st, 2023. Number eight, approve the updated agreement between the City Hibbing and St. Louis County for the base lease, effective July 1st, 2023. Nine, approve the updated engineering technician job description. Ten, authorize the posting of a full-time engineering technician. Eleven, authorize the hire of Craigson for the full-time skilled labor position in the public works department pending pre-employment contingency. Number twelve, acknowledge the resignation of Brianna Serjan, sole EMT with the Hibbing Fire Department, effective August 25th, 2023. Thirteen, approve the updated equipment operator one job description. Fourteen, approve the updated equipment two job description. Number fifteen, authorize posting of a full-time equipment operator two position in the public works department. Sixteen, acknowledge the resignation of Darren Manning, automatic truck driver in sanitation department, effective Sept- September 22nd, 23. Seventeen, authorize the post-full-time automatic truck driver with the sanitation department. Eighteen, authorize two Ford Explorers for auction. Nineteen, approve the change in library hours, Monday through Thursday, 10 a.m. to 6 p.m., Friday, 10 a.m. to 5 p.m. Twenty, the next regular Hibbing City Council meeting for Wednesday, September 20th, 2023, at 5 p.m. in the Hibbing City Council chamber. Twenty-one, set the Hibbing City Council workshop Wednesday, September 20th, 2023, following Hibbing City Council meeting in the Hibbing City Council chambers. Twenty-two, authorize the hire of John Vertich for full-time public work superintendent, effective September 11th, 2023. Twenty-three, authorize the posting of full-time public works for. Twenty-four, set the public hearing for adoption, the final levy, on Wednesday, December 6th, 2023, at 6 p.m. in the Hibbing City Council chamber. Wishes of the council?
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to approve the consent agenda as read and published.
We have a motion by councillor Hoffman-Sockman.
Support.
Support by councillor Fasso. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay, motion carries. We'll move on to Ram's introduction, Paul Pill here. Is Paul here? Okay, well, we'll log from that. Uh, do we have our names here? We're ready to go. I want to say thank you on behalf of the council for everyone that was involved with rear counseling academy, and congratulations on your certificates tonight. So I will go with Riley Engler. Lila Mackey. Joseph Novak. Yael Lee. Yara Urbah. Adriana Dory. Carter Ayer. Tyler Perry. Lillian Phillips. Noel Murhardt. Wyatt Kane. Brian Russell. And Dave Elvin. Okay, we'll move on then to committee and department reports, community developer, developer director, Betsy Alomonte.
Good evening, Mayor Council. Um, tonight, I'm here to offer a couple of things. Um, first is Resolution 230901 to apply for and accept funds, the National Endowment for the Humanities, Public Humanities Project Grant for the exhibition space inside the new Hall Rust Mind View facilities. As part of the newly constructed Mind View buildings, the project started several years back when the Mind View project started. The project team consists of Erica Zubich, Hibbing Historical Society Executive Director, City Services Director, Nick Arolla, myself, and the grant writer. The project team will get additional input from a larger community stakeholder group to ensure the exhibition space is well-designed as we move along. Right now, um, we have talked with the Science Museum of Minnesota to talk to them about the potential for designing this space. Um, we've received some preliminary information about the potential costs. I know that Nick has workshopped that in prior meetings. Um, but at this point, in order to start the process, the draft application will be submitted to National Endowment for the Humanities sometime in November. They will give us some feedback, and then I put it's due, the final application is due in January of 2024. Um, and then they have a process to decide. From there, I believe max funding that we can receive is roughly around $400,000 for a project like this. Um, and no idea if we'll get approved for all of that or not, but we are actively seeking the fund for this exhibition space to make sure that it is well, um, well-done, professionally designed, and tells the story, um, as much as we possibly can for all of the tourists, visitors, and community residents.
Very good. So we're looking for a motion to offer Resolution Number 23-111 to apply for and accept funds from the National Endowment for Humanities. Wishes of the council?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by councillor Hoffman-Sockman.
Support.
Support by councillor Bayless. Any discussion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I would just also like to say thank you to Erica Zubich, who took a lot of time and effort to help with this process and be part of the team, so, thank you.
Yes, um, member Hoffman-Sockman, thank you for mentioning that. I want to make sure, also recognize that, um, Ms. Zubich has read additional grants to other entities to help the planning of this, um, one of which was Ben Owens Foundation, um, to help with the planning preparation to go after these grants, to get the, the design and, and things roughed out like we do. So she has been actively seeking out grant funding to help the project move forward, um, and has working actively with Nick Arolla.
Thank you. Uh, any more discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay, motion carries. Betsy.
Okay, so this item is truly Nick's, and I'm gonna try and do, do it justice to carry it, but it's basically the facility use agreement with the Veterans Administration, use the Memorial Building Conference Room for counseling services to eligible veterans and their families. The VA has utilized space in the Memorial Building for over a decade to offer these free counseling services to eligible vets and their families. They would like to renew a lease to use the space for another five term. They use the space one day per week for two hours. The agreement may be canceled at any time without penalty if the city or the VA decides to execute that in the agreement.
Okay, looking for support for still-to-use agreement?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by councillor Schweberger.
Support.
Support by councillor Whitney. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay, motion carries. Betsy.
Excellent, so I'd like to offer Resolution 230905 to apply for and accept funds from the Minnesota DNR Relief Community Forester Grant. This grant will allow us to build upon the work that was done back in 2012 to, um, design the initial forest management plan, um, that was presented to Congress at that time. Um, the, the plan will be built upon to include an entire forest inventory along with management plan, and to design, um, what species of trees we should be using, how we should replant things, what things need to be maintained and, and repaired, that sort of thing, um, all through this, this process and this grant. Um, at the last council meeting, you authorized the hiring of Miriam Caro for this particular grant, and we will be with your approval tonight, submitting, um, here in September for that funding.
Very good. Looking for support?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by councillor Fasso.
Support.
Support by councillor Bayless. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay, motion carries. Betsy.
All right, so this resolution is 230906 to apply for and accept funds from the Minnesota Historical Society State Capital Projects Grant and Aid County and Local Preservation Grants Program for City House renovations. Now, you've heard several different presentations in front of you about the needs here at City Hall for capital investment and improvement. That first project is roughly $880,000 worth of envelope improvements, and this grant that we're working with Miriam Caro to apply for will be for that first, um, set of capital improvements. The funding is roughly a million dollars total in that pot, and they like to fund, um, in our investigation and research, they like to fund roughly five to 10 projects with that million dollars each year. So our ability to secure funds from this particular grant pot is roughly, if I'm doing math right, in the nature of $100,000 to $200,000, um, potential. So we're obviously going to write the most compelling, um, grant application possible. Our first draft would go in on January 26th. From there, they do a review for us over the next three weeks, send us back the draft with some information and, and suggested revisions, and then from there, we can make those suggested revisions and resubmit. The process after that is presentation to committee, and then from there, uh, they make a decision. So there will be, um, budget impact, is our staff time to work with the grant writer to provide necessary information, um, and pretend to travel down to the Capitol to, uh, present to the committee that decides this, this grant, um, fund. And so it's, it's the first step, but, um, it's a necessary one to, to move forward on some of these projects.
Very good. Again, looking for support for Resolution for accepting funding of Minnesota Historical Society State Capital Projects Grant and Aid for Colony and Local Reservation Program for Hibbing City Hall?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by councillor Fasso.
Support.
Support by councillor Whitney. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay, motion carries. Betsy.
Okay, so this item is, um, the Hip- Essentia Health Hibbing Walkability Project Proposal. So, um, Essentia Health out of Virginia considers the Hibbing community part of their service community from their main hospital location up on the Iron Range. We do have clinics here and providers for Essentia Health in Hibbing. And so a few years back, um, their Community Action Committee did a walkability study in Virginia community, and they'd like to repeat that same study on the Hemi community. One of the things that makes this study a time-appropriate project is that, um, we are all doing the Highway 169 corridor study, which is why I'm standing in front of you talking about this tonight instead of our city engineer, Ms. Dory, because he's at that open house. So if we dovetail these two projects together, um, with your approval tonight, we would be able to complete the walkability and that core study at the same time, and it would assist both our community and the, um, the health and DOT.
Very good. Looking for support?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by councillor Hoffman-Sockman.
Support.
Support by councillor Bayless. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay, motion carries. Betsy.
Okay, so this item is to authorize the signing of Right of Access Agreement for the Hibbing HRA to conduct preliminary geological testing on parcel 14002900520 with a vendor of their choice. This strategic initiative is under the 2023 City Strategic Plan Core Strategy, well-rounded, strong quality of life, quality housing stock that is affordable and accessible to the Hibbing community. When the Hibbing HRA Executive Director, Jackie Prescott, who is here tonight in the chamber, presented her 2024 levy request, she indicated that she is working to apply for funding to redevelop the Greenhaven site. Towards that end, Hibbing HRA and community development staff, myself, have been reviewing potential land parcels in the community for this development, and this parcel is a decent size and location for said development. Thus, this request is to start the investigation into the suitability for a project. Um, at this time, Jackie has indicated she will be going for a pre-application for initial funding in December of 2023, which will then allow her to go for the full application of funding in July of 2024 to this project off. So this is the first step to get that process started. The Right of Access Agreement is in your packet tonight, and it's the standard one that we have used here in the City of Hibbing for the other projects, um, that have been coming before you lately.
Very good. Hearing, uh, Betsy's information regarding the signing of a Right of Access Agreement for Hibbing HRA. Looking for support?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by councillor Schweberger.
Support.
Support by councillor Hoffman-Sockman. Any discussion?
Where is this parcel?
This parcel is back, um, on the corner. In your, um, in the Right of Access, there's a little map here, and it says it's on the corner, near the corner of Avenue West and 31st Street West.
Gotcha.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Very good. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay, motion carries. Thank you, Betsy.
Excellent.
We'll move on next to Finance Director, Preacher Sheena Moller.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council members. Item A, I'm offering Resolution Number 23-09-02, approving the 23 Range Regional Airport Authority Levy, which would be payable in 2024. Barrett Seymour, Executive Director of the airport, presented his budget for the city council on August 16th. Within his budget is requesting a levy payable in 2024 of $797,368. This is an increase 19.64% over last year. The airport reduced their levy request during COVID because they received COVID funding that was utilized to offset their budget. Now that the money has been expended, the levy request is starting to increase again. The average levy increase over the last 10 years is approximately 4.88%. I'm asking for the city council to approve the resolution.
Aye. Looking for support for the resolution?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by councillor Schweberger.
Support.
Support.
Doesn't matter.
By councillor Hildebrand. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay, motion carries. Thank you. B.
Item B, I'm offering Resolution Number 23-09-03, approving certification of the 2023 HRA levy payable in 2024 in the amount of $50,000. Jackie Scott, Executive Director of the HRA, was also here on August 16th to refer the council. Um, she is requesting the same support levy for the HRA as she has done in prior years and did last year, in the amount of $50,000. So I'm asking for city council approval.
Okay, looking for approval for, uh, HRA be payable for $50,000?
Motion to approve.
Aye, motion to approve by councillor Fasso.
Support.
Support by councillor Hoffman-Sockman. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay, motion carries. B.
Item C is Resolution Number 23-09-04, approving the City of Hibbing's 2024 preliminary budget and levy for taxes payable in 2024. Since June, the city staff has been working on putting a preliminary budget together that wouldn't include any reductions toward the services we provide. The preliminary budget includes a total city levy of $10,496,430. This is an increase of $953,444, or 9.99% from the levy of $9,542,886 in the previous year. The City General Fund, the primary governmental fund, includes a preliminary increase in spending of $12,268,44, or 6%. The largest increase for personnel for both wages and fringe benefits. Budgeted revenues in the general fund increased 7%, or $971,81 over the previous year. This increase is primarily made up of the increase in LG of $955,000. The cattle levy includes an increase of $149,795, or 22%. This pays new equipment, facility upgrades, and other public improvements. The budget also includes a $330,366 increase, or 43%, to the permanent improvements levy for a city street paving project. The OPEB preliminary levy was set at an amount of $500,000 to put forward our underfunded OPEB liability. The debtless levy pays for outstanding principal and interest payments on debt, and that will increase $73,520, or 20%, to cover debt service for bonds that are being in for equipment. This 9.99% would be the preliminary levy that is reflected in the proposed tax statement sent out in November. City staff will continue to find areas where we can, where we can save money and reduce the budget further prior to the fund budget and levy adoption in December. Um, this would be preliminary levy. At this point, we, we cannot go up from here. We would go only down, or stay the same from this point forward. I'm asking if city council will approve Resolution 23-09-04.
Aye, and what always said, wishes of the council?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by councillor Fasso.
Support.
Support by councillor Bayless. Any discussion? I just want to thank you for the great job you've done up to this point.
Thank you.
It's a great point, yeah, you get down to, and you did, and I thank you, and everybody that worked the budgets. Uh, any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay, motion carries. Thank you, Sheena.
Thank you.
Move on to, please, Steve Esty.
Uh, Mayor Council, good evening. Attached in your packet is an amended version of SRO contract with ISD 701. Uh, due to shortage with staffing this year, as well as, um, legislative changes, which I'm sure you've all heard of, in the schools this year, we will only be having SRO. Uh, that SRO will be in the elementary schools. Uh, the biggest reason is the legislative changes in the use of force stuff. Uh, so looking for council approval to update the amended version with ISD 701.
Okay, hearing what, uh, Chief Esty said, wishes of the council?
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to approve.
Motion by councillor Hoffman-Sockman.
Support.
Support by councillor Bayless. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay, motion carries. Thank you. Attorney Andy Barlow.
Mayor members of the council, within your packet is Resolution 230907. This is a proposed resolution with regard to a building which is over by the railroad tracks, the railroad roadway, which, uh, suffered, uh, fire, I think, over a year ago. Um, Mr. Green has been in contact with me, uh, and has advised that the building is dilapidated, needs to come down, it's danger. And so the resolution provides for that is to, uh, authorize the city to move forward with the provisions to have the clerk sign an order, and having that served on the owner, and if the owner fails to take the building down within the requisite timeframe, then he, uh, can forward with an order. That's what we're asking for, for you to prove this evening.
Very good. So off resolution, ordering removal of the house of this building. Wishes of the council?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by councillor Bayless.
Support.
Support by councillor Fasso. Any discussion? Hearing all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay, motion carries. Thank you, Andy. Uh, City Administrator, Przyzinski, City Administrator's report.
Mr. Mayor, I also thank you. I have one item from my, um, office this evening, um, and we have already touched on it. It's the Senate Capital Investment Committee Tours stopping in Hibbing tomorrow. Um, we will be showing them our top priority for the 2024 legislative session, which is, um, improving our water treatment system here in Hibbing. Um, I'm, I'm, I'm sending an email for the city council. There'll be some, some information for you to take a look at, the final one-page, um, uh, information for our capital investment committee. They'll take that with them. Um, is everybody or anybody going to be attending from our council? You're all invited. Um, I just wanted to get a head count so we know how many people have out there tomorrow, so. Two, three. Okay, great. Um, that's great participation. I appreciate that. I'll let know. Um, and then we'll start planning for the Minnesota House Capital Investment Committee there, that will be coming up at the end of the month, so we'll get some more information out for you. So, it's all I have from my office.
Very good, thank you so much. Uh, we'll move on to bids and quotes. Fire chief, Mr. Jankla.
Evening, Mayor, Council. The item I have before you is we received a change order from the ambulance that we ordered about six months ago, Ford increased the price of chassis, um, to, uh, to the tune of $6,253. After we received the change order, Ford did that to every ambulance manufacturer. Um, we looked at all kinds of different alternatives, um, and we just don't have any at this moment. Uh, we have some options, uh, we're looking for in 24 capital. We have some ambulance options that were not available as far as building. We placed this order. If we opt to do this, then we basically start over with another 500 weight. So, um, I'm asking that the council would approve the change order for $6,253 for the ambulance that we had ordered. It did, um, bills did come under what we had budgeted for, and even this increase is still under the budgeted amount.
Very good, you answered my question. So, wishes of the council?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by councillor Whitney.
All support.
Support by councillor Bayless. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay, motion carries. Thanks, Chief.
Thank you.
City Administrator Przyzinski, or city engineer Jesse Story?
Mr. City Council, um, first item this evening is approve the purchase of an aerial valve for the Forest Main along Highway 37. of an aerial valve for the forced main along Highway 37. It's actually a project that we've already installed, but we would like City Council permission to go ahead and pay that bill. Basically, a check for the forced main system.
Okay, very good. Wishes of the council?
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion from Councilor Hoffman-Sockman.
Support.
Support by Councilor Schweber. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? Motion carries, E.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Council. Also, from engineering, this is actually from 2022. It's a project out in Kelly Lake. Basically, a lift station control panel, stainless steel, electronics, et cetera. It took 12-plus months for delivery, something that has been installed, but we need to approve the payment of that.
Okay, for approval for electric hookup for new lifting. Wishes of the council?
Motion to approve?
Motion approved by Councilor Fossil.
Support.
Support by Councilor Bayless. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? Motion carries, E.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Council. So the last item this evening is we used a contractor to do some repair work when it comes to potholes. SBS Block Top has repaired four different potholes, Middle Street, 11th, and then I think there was something behind City Hall here, and then in the alleyway between 4th and 5th Avenue. So again, that work has been done also, but we need to up that payment.
Okay, wishes of the council?
Motion to approve?
Motion approved by Councilor Fossil.
Support.
Support by Councilor Bayless. Any discussion?
Mayor?
Yes.
Just one quick question. How long ago was Minnesota Street done? Do we know? Because that whole thing's about to be researched now.
I don't know that for sure.
Is it a alley behind there?
I think it's an alley.
That makes sense.
Okay.
I wasn't clear on that, my apologies for that. But yeah, I think that was a, I think it's an approach, an alley.
Okay.
I think is what they fixed.
That makes way better than that.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? Motion carries. Thank you, Chris. Please, Steve Esti.
Mayor Collins, good evening. My first item is to approve the purchase of two Ford X-Blues from Ford of Hibbing. These will be in the amount of $43,599.04. The purchase will be paid through an equipment certificate as well as covered funds from last year's parking reps.
Okay.
Looking for council approval?
Looking for support, wishes of the council?
Motion approved.
Motion approved by Councilor Schweber.
Support.
Support by Councilor Hoffman-Sockman. Any discussion? B, I had one question as we were talking about the lease type. This is totally separate from that. Okay.
Yep.
That's all I wanted to.
My third item, we're going to talk about that.
Okay, very good. Okay, wishes of the council? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? Motion carries, E.
B is to approve the purchase of six handgun packages through Tactical Advantage in the amount of $6,679.26. We had actually budgeted for these in 2024, but we found money remaining in 2023, so we'll give us now and save some on next year's budget.
Okay, wishes of the council?
Motion approved.
Approved by Councilor Bayless. Support. Support by Councilor Whitney. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? Motion carries, C.
So Mayor, item C, which we were referring to when we talked about the first two squads. So the first two squads, we had already planned for this year, so we chose to purchase those outright for this year since they were butted already. Moving forward, we've been exploring the new fleet program. Initially, we had loved Enterprise, got some numbers from them. I did some more research and found another entity that specializes in the government leasing and purchasing. Republican First National is the name of the company. Need a credit application and financing to purchase three 2023 Dodge Durangos. This would be through Republican First National. Comparing that to what we'd be getting through Enterprise, it was approximately a $20,000 savings. There was a little bit of red tape we found out with Enterprise, so I think this would be a better option. After City Attorney Andy Borland looked at that from Enterprise, there was stuff that just wasn't adding up. And exploring this company, it's much better paying for our buck.
Okay, hearing what Chief Esti had said? Wishes of the council?
Make the motion to approve.
Motion by Councilor Bayless.
Support.
Support by Councilor Schweber. Any discussion? Steve, I had one question. One of the strengths of Enterprise was availability.
Yep.
So how is this company?
So we, me and City Administrator Przewinski have talked about this in length, so we're real fortunate. The individual we use to outfit our squads, he's based out of Minneapolis, and have a personal relationship with him. So he's going to take it. He's the one that phoned these three cars for us. These cars are actually in Indiana. So he's willing to do that on the backside for us to help us out and save us some money by doing it.
Very good. Any other discussion?
Tripped you up on Enterprise, Steve?
What's that?
What tripped you up on Enterprise? It seemed like we were at the finish line with them and...
Yeah, so the more we looked into it, there was a, per vehicle, there was almost a $6,000 fee at the end of the lease that they wanted us to pay. They didn't tell us about that upfront, so they make it look you're making your lease payments, and then you got to the end, and then there was an additional almost $6,000 you had to pay to own the vehicle outright. Where this company, we're paying, we're doing the yearly payment at the end, wanted outright, no other payments. So that was the, very frustrating, I guess you could say, towards the end when they finally sent us the actual dollars and what everything added up to be, and then we sat at the end and I questioned it. And then that's where we...
It's an awful big whammo to not tell you about.
Yeah.
Glad you heard it.
Per vehicles, yeah. It was $6,000.
I did have one question too.
Yes.
Sure. Okay. So this program, are we going to look at doing the same thing that we were thinking about with the national program? So this is going to put us at five total, so the two and then these three, and then next year we into?
Right.
Another four with this company?
Yep. Yeah, kind of that layout we had talked about at the meeting session. Same idea. This will actually be cheaper for us than Enterprise, and that's why we decided to go into this one. Just so you're aware too, this is not final sign-off on this. From here, they'll send the actual version for candy and the mayor review and it's signed.
This was just a good update that you made this change for very live courses.
Yep.
Very good. Wishes of the council?
We have a motion.
We have a motion. Okay. All in favor say aye. No more discussion. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? Motion carries. Thank you. Thank you, Steve.
Thanks.
Okay, Library Manager Laura Colen.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the council. I come before you this evening for a few items, asking for approval on some bits and things for the library. The first item is asking for approval on the quote from Heart Electric for the replacement of 18 lights to be upgraded to energy-efficient LED lamps in an amount of $3,357. This total includes parts, labor, and the disposal of the old fixtures.
Very good. Wishes of the council?
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion by Councilor Hoffman-Sockman.
Support.
Support by Councilor Schweber. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? Motion carries, E.
Thank you. Next item I have on the agenda is approval for the quote for A to Z database subscription for access to the services for the research database in the amount of $1,200.
Very good. Wishes of the council?
Motion to approve.
Motion approved by Councilor Bayless.
Support.
Support by Councilor Fossil. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? Motion carries, C.
Thank you. Item C, I'm asking for the approval for vote for installing e-Faxine and then bringing the monthly agreement from Metro Sales Incorporated in the amount of $855.88.
Okay, wishes of the council?
Motion to approve?
It was me.
Okay. We have a motion by Council Whitney.
Support.
Support by Councilor Fossil. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? Motion carries, E.
Thank you. Item D, we have a small correction in the price. We're asking for approval from the quote from American Eagle Security Systems for the installation of new keypads and sensors for the monitoring of both the fire and the intrusion alarms in the amount of, the corrected amount is $1,268.80. This total reflects the yearly monitoring cost for both the fire and the security system.
Was that amount again, $1,000? Okay. Wishes of the council?
Motion approved.
Motion approved by Schweber.
Support.
Support by Councilor Bayless. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? Motion carries, E.
Thank you. Item E, we're asking for the approval for the quote from American Eagle Security Systems for the installation of new security system doors with key fob access for both entrances of the library in the amount of $4,226.40.